If you're ready, it's rolling. Did you, uh, what happened to that resolution?
Okay.
Right there. I just wasn't sure where it was. That's good. There are several places to sign on those minutes.
Okay. And the minutes are February twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
You two ready over there?
He has a time.
Get started. Sorry. You're good. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the ninth day of March, two thousand twenty. We appreciate your attendance. We'll begin this morning with an opening prayer given by Shane Manuelli, and it will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Dan Jessen.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for our many wonderful blessings and grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together this morning as a county commission and discuss the needs of Iron County. We're grateful for the country that we live in and ask that Thy Spirit will be here with us today as we discuss those needs that we can make the best decisions and move forward while we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan and Shane. We'll move into approving the minutes portion of our meeting, and this is to approve the minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, I move approval of the Iron County Commission minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
I second that. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. We'll now go into our departmental reports. We're gonna change the order a little bit. We're gonna go ahead and hear from Shane Manuelli, our defense attorney coordinator. He's gotta be in court soon, so we're gonna let him go first.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do have a few matters to cover with the court, but I've been here almost six months now in this position, and I think been able to make some good strides. I've been working with the attorneys, each of the attorneys that we have, I think are doing a good job. As I've worked with them, what we've strived to do is first keep specialized attorneys where they should be, the juvenile attorneys in juvenile court and district court attorneys in district court. With the addition of my position, I'm able to float, to keep the district court attorneys where they specialize, as well as the juvenile attorneys where they specialize. We've also been able to cover a lot of the conflict cases. We haven't had to go seek outside counsel for conflicts with the addition of another attorney.
Shane, was that happening a lot before?
Outside counsel?
Yes.
Or the coverage of other courts?
Well, maybe both or the outside counsel. Did that happen a lot before?
So there were, there was a budget for it, and it would, it would extend. I don't know if it was a lot, but there were enough cases to be noticeable. I could, I could look and see how many.
I'm just curious. But that's eliminated. Your position's eliminated that?
So far, yeah. So that, I think, has been a really positive scenario. We've also started to try to balance workloads with the different attorneys to have the workload be balanced fairly between what the different attorneys are doing. And we've also strived to implement a new case management system, I think that's going to be beneficial as, as we utilize that to go paperless, to have the case management online and accessible anywhere that they go, will be beneficial. But I think overall, it's been a good five months thus far, and we're continuing to work forward towards a couple other goals that we have. Each of the attorneys have also been able to attend or have signed up for continuing legal education, which is important that they do each year, meet the bar's standards, as well as stay privy on the changes in the law. But any questions on how it's going or things that we're doing with the public defender's office?
No, I'm, I don't. I'm hearing good things. We appreciate what you're doing.
What were some of the other goals you had there continuing to add?
So we wanted to initially, well, future goals or goals that we've had?
Either, yeah.
So goals that we've had are to keep specialized attorneys where they need to be, cover conflicts, just as I discussed, and balance workloads, as well as in the future, we want to with jury trials, have two attorneys on each of the jury trials to help assist one another as jury trials go forward, continue with that legal education, as well as have a system that, with this data management system, a system that allows us to track better what we're doing, how we're using our hours, and free up time for the attorneys to be able to go and visit individuals that are incarcerated more quickly. One of the things that we're hoping is that we can have someone present at initial appearances, that we have an attorney there to ensure that we get addresses, phone number, any other contact information, and that we have an attorney be able to visit quickly, whether the person is incarcerated or not, but we're able to make contact as attorneys very quickly so that we can work towards positive resolutions of those cases.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Great.
Okay.
Good report.
Well, thank you. And if I could be excused, I'll return down to Cedar City.
Okay.
Thank you.
Travel safe. Thanks, Shane. Oh, yes. Correct. Yeah, thanks, Alma. So I'd just like to excuse Commissioner Blake. He's under the weather a little bit today, so miss him and wish him a speedy recovery. Thank you. Let's see. We'll go to Dan, our auditor.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks to John. He, he moved me from my, from my normal rotation of quarterly reporting at my request. It seems like it always landed at the worst possible time. I don't, I'd be right in the middle of the worst, busiest, and here I'd have to do a quarterly report, so I asked him to move me around a little bit to see if I could find something that would work a little bit.
He said something about putting a lot of pressure. He lit Joy's out, a lot of pressure.
Yeah, he does. He likes to give me hard. So first of all, the auditor budget is a pretty small thing, but it looks like last year is gonna, is gonna look pretty good where we sit. Usually when I talk budgets, I'm talking about the entire countywide. And speaking of which, I've been, I've been very busy. This is a busy time of year. It seems like we, on the calendar, I just get done with one big thing. You know, it's either audit or budget is always this override, overall thing that is being worked on, and then we have all of our other things that hit the auditor's office on a calendar year basis. But right now, we're in the middle of wrapping up two thousand nineteen, all of the accounting and all of the entries. We're working with Hinton Burdick. As you remember, right now, we have, we have two firms that we've engaged, Hinton Burdick, to help with the end of year and the financial statements. And then we have Kimlin Roberts that come and do the audit. I've been working with both firms. They're both requesting a lot of stuff from us, getting, getting ready for that. Interestingly enough, I went up to a roundtable with the state auditor's office about a month ago, and they are now requiring entities like ourselves to have two different firms. And if you don't have two different firms, they're going to make the independent auditor send all of their work notes and all of the journal entries that they may have done to the state auditor's office on a yearly basis. So it looks like we're, we're actually ahead of the curve in doing this. You know, everybody around the table was like, are you kidding me? They were, they were kinda frustrated. And I was like, yeah, we just did that last year, so.
So, so if county was to send all that information to the state auditor, then do they look over it or?
What they wanna make sure, and this has bugged me forever, is that you have your independent auditor that comes in, and they basically put on one hat and, and do all of this financial statement work and journal entries and stuff, and then they take off that hat, and then they put on their independent auditor hat and say, okay, make me sign a document, or whoever the CFO is, that says, this is all your work, and now they audit it. And it's always bugged me, and, and they said, there's really not this degree of independence that the independent auditor should have. So if there's only one firm, they want all of their notes, all of their work papers, which the independent auditors aren't gonna like this either, and they want all their journal entries. And if it looks like they're doing too much of the work and then turning around and auditing it, then they wanna look at it. That's basically.
Well, my question is, will they look at it at no cost?
Wow.
Because I mean, I mean, you know, somebody's gotta, you know, they're gonna have to have some way of forcing the other counties to have to.
And I have a great working relationship with, with Google, but one of, one of the things that I've constantly been on him is, man, you're kind of growing the size and scope of the state auditor's office, so, but yeah, I mean, if I was his employees, I'd be thinking, how are we gonna do all this? This is a lot of work that's gonna come their way, but. Most of that lines in the lap of Seth, our, the, lives in Cedar City, and he's a great guy, but he's, he's running, so. Anyway, so we're just working through that. One interesting item, and it's preemptive, so I hate to go there, but I know that it's a sensitive topic, so it looks like we're gonna be able to set about one point four million aside to capital projects for the jail. We budgeted at that, at the end of the year, so that we could set some money aside, some of the excess fund balance. Of course, I wasn't able to really know what that was when we were budgeting it, because everything has to work through, but as I've been processing everything and every, everything is really coming into focus as far as the year and how much excess that we have that we can set aside, and it looks like that's gonna be the number that we can set aside into capital projects from unaside fund balance, so. That's just assigned. That's not reserved. It's not, it's just money that gets earmarked, basically, in the capital projects fund, so. And on that topic, I do now have the name of three firms that could potentially do a feasibility study if, if we wanna go down that route, so I, I think we probably need to schedule a time, get back a soft quote from them on kinda what we're talking about money-wise, and so that, I mean, really, that's kinda where we're at. To block us from moving forward is making a decision on that, so. Anyways, I do have the name of the firms, and I know at least one of them was excited to talk to us about it, so we'll see where that goes. Right now, we're also, just, the deadline just passed for tax exempt properties, which Christine will come in and present. That's one of those calendar year things that we have. Every year, we just, we get done with one thing, we roll into another. That's been a lot of work that's, that's really in Christine's lap, the majority of it. Every year, we have some controversial stuff. Is a property tax exempt or not? It gets into the gray area on legality, and so we have to make some judgment calls and, and ask for documentation and stuff. We have just barely, we're starting the process for the tax sale. It starts really early in the year. We hire a gentleman by the name of Roger Shirts to come in and do all of the research on all of the parcels. A lot of them that, you know, before they ever get a fee assigned, we're spending a lot of money to, to get them ready for the tax sale, and then they get paid at the last minute, and so we've already, we've already spent that money, but anyways, we're doing that. Also, as, as we know, this year, we're, we're working on rolling out the new fleet. I've been putting a lot of work into that recently, including Cedar City Corporation asked me to come in. They're actually looking at a similar model, at least for their law enforcement, and so they asked me to come and do a presentation as to what we were planning on rolling out, and they're looking really hard at doing something similar. Reason why that's of note is one of the biggest puzzles to, or the biggest pieces of the puzzle to make that work for, for our blue fleet or our law enforcement fleet is finding a, a solution to the sheer cost of upfitting a vehicle and then uninstalling that and putting it in a new vehicle. Right now, we're sending all that work to a company called Premier. They do fantastic work, but they're not cheap.
How much does that cost?
Our last trucks we did was about twenty-seven thousand. Now, the majority of that is the equipment, so we can roll that into the next vehicle, but.
What is the, just the labor cost without the equipment?
The labor costs on this last one, now keep in mind, this was at the old labor rate. On the old state contract was fifty-five an hour. It just barely, they got approved with the new state contract. It'd have went to eighty-five an hour, but that was about, seems like the labor rate was about three thousand bucks. And so that'll go up, you know, from fifty-five an hour to eighty-five an hour.
How many are we doing a year?
Well, just the new vehicles that we buy, so around six.
About six a year?
But under the new model, what we're gonna look to do is, and, and as I've been running the numbers, I, I, we're planning on every two years cycling out our vehicles. I think on the law enforcement, we're gonna have to do it to three, just because of the cost of the outfit. Now, again, you're not spending twenty-seven thousand every time.
Right.
You figure you can get about, as I worked a lot with Lieutenant Slosser, we can get about six years of realistic life out of the light bar, the radar, the camera unit, all of the stuff that goes in there, even the laptop and all that stuff. About six years is pushing it. So if we roll them over to two years, we can put it into three trucks before you have to buy new equipment. If we go three years, because it's the lowest common denominator, six will also work. So we can go, we can put it into two trucks before we have to roll it out and, and buy new stuff for the third.
I mentioned this before, but Kane County has a guy that does that for them, and he's amazing. I guess he can just, and he saves them a ton of money. Would there be a chance of us trying to, would that be our fleet manager that would do that and do the fleet management, or?
Well, that's what I've been looking at, and that's actually one of the reasons why I mentioned that conversation with Cedar City. I think that, looking at the sheer workload of the whole job, I don't know if our fleet manager can do both, but possibly, but as I look at it, the number of vehicles we'll have to take care of and roll out with all the others, I think it's probably not likely that we'll be able to do both, but I think if we partnered with Cedar City on a guy, because here's the thing.
In interlocal agreement and making an agreement with them to help them.
Exactly. And they were really interested in that as well. They're in a little bit of a different boat, because they already have a full, I mean, we take care of our, so there's the white fleet, that's your just cars and trucks that don't have anything, you know, the attorneys drive and your assessors drive, then you have your blue fleet, which is your, your law enforcement stuff, and then what you call your yellow fleet. That's your public works, your heavy machinery, your roads, your, your trash trucks, you know. They have, they do all of that in one location. Of course, they're centrally located. They're a city. It makes a lot more sense. They have all the mechanics in one spot. They have their fleet manager, all that stuff. We're spread out a little bit more. We have, we have vehicles staged, staged at different areas. We have, you know, Loman and those guys out at the landfill, and we have our guys at the, at the roads that work on our heavy machinery. This will kinda help to centralize that, but we won't be a full operating fleet management, but we'll eventually get to that. But my point is, is Cedar City's in a little bit of a different boat. A, they don't put as many miles on their law enforcement vehicles as we do. We're running them all over the Dane County. They're running all day long versus the city that they're just driving within city boundaries. So whereas we may put twenty-five to thirty thousand miles a year on a truck, they're gonna put ten to fifteen on a, on a vehicle in a year. But they still have the same challenge in the outfit and the downfit. Now, they've done it on a couple of them. They had a guy that did it, and it took him like three weeks per vehicle. They did two, right? But there's the learning curve. If you understand the learning curve, which, by the way, everybody thinks of backwards. The learning curve means it's sloped with a negative slope. The more times you do it, the quicker the time gets, the less the time gets to do it.
So we put that out for bid. And I know we've done Premier time after time after time, and I remember when, not that many years ago, it was nineteen grand. I mean, it's just going crazy with the inflation on it.
The, the problem, yeah, go ahead.
Can I address that?
Yes.
The, the reason we use Premier, Premier is because they're the best. They do it right the first time, and we don't have problems with them. Both Cedar PD, when I was at Parwin, we've used different companies in the past, and we haven't got the same results, and that's why we, that's why everyone goes to Premier. And literally, everyone goes to Premier from Idaho, Wyoming, Colorado, Utah, now they're getting into Nevada. He is growing exponentially so fast because his reputation precedes him throughout the Intermountain West. He does the job right the first time. We don't have problems. And in the rare exception that we do have problems, he'll send a tech down to take care of it for us. So, you know, we've just had a very, very, very good experience with him. He buys the right equipment for what it is that we need. He knows what he does, and he does it right. And, you know, for, for us, the cost is worth the savings that we have in keeping the, the vehicles up and operating instead of going back and forth in and out of the shop.
As, as we look at this, we, we would, there's a different, there's a difference between what Premier does and if we were to take it on what we would do. The, the main difference is this. They're, they're geared up so that they can do how many makes and models, SUVs, trucks, you know, all this stuff. And, and they have to have all those brackets. They have to have the know-how. They have, they have a guy that does wiring harnesses. They have a guy that does radar. They have a guy that does lights. They, you know what I mean? They have, they have to stock all that stuff, you know. Largely, if we can have, you know, one vehicle, one make and model, now it'll change over time, and we may go with a different model, but you're gonna stock one set of brackets for, you know, the laptop. You know, you, you know, in other words, and if you have a guy doing it, they're doing the same vehicle over and over and over again. They're gonna get really good at knowing that vehicle and what works, the problems when they have, when we have a problem. Okay, I know, never to do that again on this vehicle. They're, these ones are sensitive. So I think that it's something that if we can take that on, we can reduce that cost down, and the time spent, the time is the bigger, the biggest issue, and, and we can look at it. But again, we, we have to look at it. As of, for using Premier and rolling them out every three years, it's, it's about sixes. I don't think we'll save any money going to a high, a high, a high turnover model. That's including maintenance and everything. Now, it's still worth doing, even if we do it and stick with Premier, even if we're not gonna save a penny over what we do, just because we'll have that much more of a reliable fleet. How much of our time is spent with guys driving up to Salt Lake to swap these things out, or they're, or the vehicles are in the shop? There's a lot of costs that don't find their way into the budget on a fixed asset expense line item that still have a budgetary impact. How much more overtime do we have when we have, you know, when you, when, when he's gotta send two deputies to run a vehicle up, or whoever he sends, by definition, that means someone else is gonna have to work overtime. That comes out of the overtime budget. Doesn't come out of a fixed expense, fixed asset line item. So even if, even if we were to stick with Premier, I, I don't think we'll save any money, at least on the blue fleet, but it would still give us that much more of a reliable fleet, make us more efficient. But I think that if we can figure out a way to do it in-house, if we cooperate with Cedar, we have a guy that's dedicated to it, that knows those vehicles, then we can really see some savings, and anyways.
I think we mentioned this before, but maybe jump in the car and run over to Knab and have, does it with this guy that does theirs and just learn how he does it, what he does.
Well, and I think that we need to factor this in as we hire our fleet manager. Essentially, we're looking for somebody who, who is a manager first and understands management, understand budgets. They've gotta be a car guy, and if we can find somebody that has, that has an idea and concept of twelve volt, low voltage installation and stuff like that, then I think we'll be, we'll be ahead of time. Not just a simple mechanic and not just a car guy who's worked behind a desk selling cars or something, but somebody who actually is more of a rounded individual. I think that'd be good, but. Anyways, we're moving forward on that. I don't have anything else to report, but if there's questions, we're always, we're always in the middle of everything in my office, but we're, we're doing good. Oh, one last thing, yeah. So went to UAC board meeting. This was the first, the first meeting with the new makeup of the board. It's a much bigger board now, because we have somebody from every county, with the exception of Utah County, so all twenty-eight counties are sending a representative, plus they have the other representatives like myself that are representative affiliate group. Paul was there, so this is the first time that, that we had such a large group, so you had a lot of new board members that were there for the very first time, and it was a fairly lightweight meeting as far as what we were getting at, but it was, it was good. UAC is, is operating pretty smoothly right now with our new CEO and new board, and it was good. Paul can tell you what he, what he thought about it, but.
It was good. It was a good meeting.
That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Maria, tourism and parks are right?
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Okay, so budget is going along where we are at three months. So generally, we do spend a majority of our budget within the first six months of the year, because we're spending our money on advertising, making sure it's getting out into the seasons. I will be, I wasn't gonna renew my short-term rental software program, but when I was doing my budget, but decided that I probably should at least do it for one more year, and so my dues budget will be over, and so I will need to do a mid-year budget adjustment so that we can take care of that. We ended two thousand nineteen in terms of our TRT and restaurant tax collections slightly up, and we're, we're thrilled that that occurred, and our occupancies, we had a small rebound, and so we're up one point six percent over the, the previous year, so. We think, of course, occupancies have been very contingent upon what's happening with short-term rentals. Short-term rentals don't report, just lodging, you know, your typical lodging properties. We think we're starting to see that short-term rentals are kind of starting to, I think they've kind of peaked in certain areas and are kinda maybe receding back a little bit, because it's a pretty full market. And so that's why I wanted to keep the short-term rental software program, so that we can continue to monitor that and see what's, you know, see what's happening. Bryanhead certainly keeps growing, so we'll see, see how that has an impact on, on, on them. We're finishing up our, our grant with the Utah Office of Tourism for winter marketing. Bryanhead is reporting that their skier days are slightly down this year, and most of that is due to the bad weather and I-15 being closed over the Christmas break. That's when they make their money. That's when they have the most, majority of their visitors. And I-15 was closed in the Cajon Pass during the Christmas break, so California, the people who we anticipated who'd be staying from California ended up canceling their trip, so. We haven't had the best snow late in the season, and so that's kind of contributing to some of it, but we still feel like it's gonna be a great year, and so we're glad we have this money to keep things going. In terms of what we're working on right now, in terms of the tourism office, we've just partnered with Google My Business. This is gonna help us improve our destination rankings and reviews for over five hundred of our visitor-related businesses here in Iron County. We're gonna be able to edit content, remove bad content, add attractions. We'll also become an official Google Business Verifier. This became important to our office when we started, when it was pointed out to us that Lake Quitchippa became, was a top-ten attraction for Cedar City. So we have a little issue there. But we're gonna get that fixed. It's gonna be Lake Canary Falls all over again. But boy, are they gonna be disappointed. Anyways, we're excited to be working with them on that. Google, as you know, is, is, you know, where most people get their information when they're planning a trip. We've generated some amazing national media coverage. We have a very, our, our media person in our office, she is, she is exceptional, and we got, we had a hit in National Geographic, a mention in Lonely Planet, and another article on BuzzFeed. Total impressions were over eighty-six million, million impressions, and the ad value was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that's money we don't have to spend in advertising our, in our area. We are dealing, we're still working on the wife, wife finding plan for Cedar City. We met with UDOT to get some of the UDOT signs fixed as we were doing the mains, as they were doing the Main Street paving project. Almost all of those are now complete, uh, we're excited that they were able to do those for us. We're working on a branded signage plan, um, and I've included an example of what we're looking at, uh, for Cedar City. As soon as we get that approved and installed, which we're hoping to do this year, uh, we'll move on to Bri, to Parwan to see if we can help them with some, uh, branded wayfinding signage. Um, Brian Head has already done theirs, um, and didn't seek our, uh, assistance. So, we're glad that they were able to get that done. Um, and then, lastly, on tourism, we're just, oh, two things. Uh, the third annual Southern Utah Tourism Summit is in April, it will be in Canab, but we'd like to invite you to attend. Um, it's a great way to, uh, network with your, with our fellow tourism partners here in the South. We talk about, uh, specific issues happening here in Southern Utah in terms of tourism. Um, and if you would like to, let me know and, and I'll see what I can do to get that, um, waived, the fee waived. Um, and then last, uh.
What day was that again, Maria?
It's April first, let's see, April second and third, and it's in Canab. We held it in Cedar City last year and it was very well attended, so, and we appreciate those that attended. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, coronavirus is definitely the topic of, of discussion right now. Our concern is, uh, how this is going to affect the anticipated drop in tourism. Um, first, uh, China is our second, um, international market here in Utah. It's, and it is our second international market as well. Um, and because there's no flights, um, that we're in, we are anticipating that there will be some impact into our area. And the other thing is that, um, around the states, travel is being restricted as a response. And so, we're kind of feeling like there will probably be a dip, um, this second quarter. Um, but then it should rebound once this, um, the virus season is over, um, and people will start planning trips again. So, um, so we're anticipating a dip and then it should go right back up. So, we've been, uh, we sent out an email to our partners last week just to try to keep them apprised of what's happening, so. Any questions regarding tourism?
Oh, that's great. That Google My Business, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, we're, we're excited about it for sure. Okay, out the red. Okay, so, um, as of January thirty-first, we are at three point seven eight percent of our budget. Um, we don't spend a lot of our budget right now, that certainly starts to happen as we get into the summer. Um, we are very appreciative of, um, of Commissioner Adams working with us and with the Road Department to get the Parks Roads under the direction of the Road Department. So, we appreciate that very much, that will be very helpful. Uh, we have several events planned out at the parks this year. We have the Intermountain Cup Bike Race, the UFL Festival is returning, um, we have the half marathon and, and of course, the High School Mountain Bike Region Races. We'll have two races this year, one in September with fifteen hundred participants and one in October with eight hundred participants. Um, we are not, um, hosting the championship. Um, they want to go back and forth between Cedar City and St. George, so this year it's St. George's turn. Um, I don't have the data for twenty nineteen, unfortunately Stephanie was out of the office, but we'll have that at, uh, the, my next report. But I do wanna report that online reservations are now available on the county website. They've been up and running since the first of January. Uh, we are having some issues with the software, um, so we are currently looking to see if there's a better provider out there right now. But for right now, it does work, um, and it's being utilized. Uh, I also attached, uh, a five-year report from the BLM on the construction of trails in Iron County. Uh, some of them are actually in, uh, the Three Peaks area. So, with their combination of grants, um, including seventy-two thousand dollars from Iron County, um, and volunteer in-kind contributions, it's well over one point one million dollars in, uh, construction. Um, and we have, it's resulted in fifteen new trails and thirty new miles of trails in Iron County. So, good, good money spent. It's, and it's extremely helpful for us in the tourism department because now we have more attractions, um, to, to advertise. Um, workloads right now, basically, we'll begin opening Woods Ranch for the summers, um, in the early part of May. Uh, we're doing weed abatement right now at the shooting range, uh, we're working with, um, uh, the weed department. And then we're constructing three more shade covers for the shooting range right now.
While you're on that, Maria, I took my kids out a while back shooting, the range looks great. I mean, they've, I hadn't been there for a while and it's incredible what they've done, the improvements they've made since I was there the last time.
Oh, good.
Just pass that along if you would, it looks really good.
Yeah, we take a lot of pride in the shooting range, um.
I like where they've bermed it up, so you have individual, you know, it's, the safety's just gotten really nice where you've got individual places to shoot and keep people safe. It's really nice.
That was, uh, that was a priority when, um, I took over the, uh, the Recreation Department. And again, we appreciate our Road Department because they have been so willing to go out there and fix those berms and make sure they're up to, up to snuff because they do deteriorate over the years. Um, you know, all it takes is, you know, it's just wind, but they do, they do, uh, recede. So, uh, we, we do like what's happening at the, we do love what's happening at the shooting range. And then just finally, the patent for Three Peaks is completed. Um, we should be doing, the BLM would like to do a signing ceremony at Three Peaks sometime in April, so, um, more details to come on that. Any questions?
Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Sheriff Carpenter.
Okay, see if I'm smart enough to use this clicker here. Where do I need to point this at, John?
Is that not working? Well, let's do this. Should be right here, is where you want me to point. Oh, I know what the problem is. All right. No, here, I've got it for you. Now try it. Sorry about that.
Okay, let me just go over a few, uh, current issues that we're facing right now. Uh, we've, Deputy Gower was involved in a snowmobile accident that you may or may not be aware of. In that accident, he broke his neck, was lifelighted down to St. George, underwent, uh, surgery. And, uh, he's expected to be out for, uh, probably at least three months. Right now, the prognosis looks pretty good that he'll be able to recover. We're keeping him in our prayers and hopeful for that, uh, recovery and that he'll be able to return to work.
When did this happen?
It's been about three weeks ago now. His family was up on the mountain, snowmobiling and they had a, one of the snowmobiles got rolled over. He sat it back up and thought he better take it for a test ride and apparently the throttle stuck on it and ended up hitting a tree and, uh, broke his neck. So, uh, we're, we're hopeful that he'll be able to recover fully and, and get, get back to work. The other day, we had, just this last week, we had a traffic accident with Corporal Lorenson. Uh, we had a, uh, a person that had been fired from the solar farm the day before and had showed back up out on the solar farm out in Burl and had threatened, uh, to one of the employees out there that he was going to, uh, shoot everybody on sight. The deputies were in response, uh, is during the snowstorm, but the, the road was clear, uh, at the time. Uh, he was responding, his sirens quit on the vehicle, so he shut everything down to just proceed at normal, uh, speeds. As he went around the corner, he hit black ice, slid out into the oncoming lane of traffic. There's a veh, vehicle coming at him, he tried to get back into the burl pit to avoid collision. They ended up sideswiping each other, which forced him back off into the pit and rode the vehicle. Uh, fortunately, everybody was okay there, but with the black ice, four more vehicles came around, two more were involved in the accident and two were able to get off the road and avoid the collision. So, uh, that's a vehicle that is now out. But again, we're grateful that everybody was, no one was injured in that accident. Uh, Lieutenant Schlosser is going to be going in for shoulder surgery. It's gonna be about three months before he's fully recovered, but I expect that he'll be placed on light duty after two or three weeks and won't be able to continue in his, most of his duties. Uh, I had the unfortunate job of dismissing Kellen Hudson from employment, uh, here the other, about a two weeks ago. And, uh, my understanding is, is that he's going to appeal the decision. I haven't seen that appeal yet. Uh, ultimately, that may end up coming to the commission, so we'll see where that goes. With everything that's going on with our personnel shortages, you know, we, we do have personnel shortages currently in patrol and courts and in corrections, uh, which we're working on. Most of those will be taken care of, but a lot of that has to do with, because of the changeover in personnel and whatnot, that we've got deputies that are in the FTO program right now. So, that puts us in a situation where we're short. As far as the, some of the personnel changes, with the approval of the Administrative Sergeant position that the commission, uh, gave us, we are very appreciative of. Uh, Sergeant, uh, Dave Mitchell is going to be taking over, uh, as the new Administrative Sergeant, uh, which opened up the investigation. Sergeant, Sergeant Nate Houchen will be taking over investigations. Patrol Sergeant, new promotion is Sergeant Caleb Anderson. And, uh, that opened up a deputy position, so, uh, Devin Lorenson is, will be our new corporal for patrol. And then our, our new traffic deputy is Deputy Wade Lee. And just in talking with, with Wade here in just about the last three weeks, he's had, uh, two major drug interdictions. Uh, one of them, he recovered three Ziploc baggies full of methamphetamine. And then the second one, he recovered, uh, methamphetamine and heroin, which had a street value of about half a million dollars. So, he's done some really good work already. Some of our new patrol deputies, Deputy Eric Roman, uh, was lateral from the jail, uh, which I'm sure Shalon's not happy with me about that, but, but he's doing real well, uh, in the FTO process and we hope to have him, uh, out on the road soon on his own. Deputy Dave McIntyre has, uh, come to work for us from Cedar PD. I'm sure most of you know Dave, he's, uh, worked for Cedar PD for over twenty years now and, and has decided that he'd like to come to work for the sheriff's office and have a change of scenery and he's very excited to be here. We're glad to have him.
Sheriff, did Wade leave, leave the county and come back or he's just been in the desert? Cause I know he used to be.
No, he, he used to be traffic and when, uh, they got rid of that second traffic car, he went back to patrol. He's been working patrol ever since. And, uh, he, he does traffic so well. I mean, he just, he just has a, a natural ability to really know what he's looking for and does an exceptional job. So, we're excited to get him back out as a, as a full-time traffic deputy. Then Cory Perez is the new hire that will be coming to you today for approval. Just a few of the major events that we've been dealing with here over the last little bit. Uh, we had a unidentified deceased male, you know, filled out in Canaraville. Uh, when they found him, they found him naked, laying down in the field on his belly. Didn't have any ID. They found his clothing in a pile, no identification on him. Eventually, uh, we found a vehicle that had been involved in a traffic accident or had run out of fuel down, um, I-15. And they were eventually able to make the link and found that it was a, a male from the Taylorsville area that had got out of his vehicle in a snowstorm and we don't know why, but had stripped down naked and ended up, we believe, dying from exposure. We're still waiting for the medical examiner's report to come back from, from that to find out for sure, but there was nothing there that would indicate any type of foul play. We're just waiting to see what the medical examiner's report says, but at least we know who he is now. Talked about the Burl Solar Farms, we're still, uh, following up on that. And then, uh, we had a dementia patient over the weekend that disappeared from home. And they immediately called out search and rescue and set up a perimeter and were able to locate him and get him back home, so that's a, a good outcome there. We had a DUI motorcycle accident over the weekend that had a passenger on the vehicle that we were very concerned about whether she was going to survive or not. This morning, they said that she's doing well and they expect that she'll probably recover, so we're, we're happy about that. And we had a dead body in Burl. Uh, a neighbor noticed a vehicle hadn't been moved in a few days, went over to check and found the, the occupant of the house deceased. And it doesn't look like anything out of the ordinary there, compares that he probably died of natural causes there. Uh, just on the legislation, it's taken a lot of time, as it always does this time of year. Uh, we're winding down with that, today is our last law enforcement legislative committee meeting. But, uh, there are a number of things that, that we've been concerned with, with, uh, some of the legislation that's been out there. One of them that is most concerning to me and to the Sheriff's Association is the, uh, bell reform. And I've, I've received a number of emails from citizens here in Iron County, which I very much appreciate. Unfortunately, I don't get to vote on that, so, you know, but, but as far as the, uh, Utah Sheriff's Association, Utah Police, we oppose that bill. And, uh, part of the reason is, is because if you look at like New York and some of the other, uh, communities that have done no, no fee bells, uh, the crime rate has skyrocketed. When New York put theirs in place, after two days, they had a substantial spike in their crime rate. And everybody said that there was no way that they could make that conclusion after just two days. But after a month, they're now looking at how they can, how they can reform the reform bill. And, uh, that's a, that's a huge concern because this bill really isn't that much different from New York's bill.
There, I, I received numerous emails over the weekend about this and I, I, this is with their legislator, or I mean, I emailed them all this morning. Uh, I looked at the calendar and it looks like it's dying in the Senate, hopefully.
Yeah, and I, I, I hope that that's the case. I had a good conversation with Senator Vickers about it and I've sent him some additional information. And he was going to try to lead the charge to, to kill that bill and so we're hoping that it does. You know, I was back at the Western State Sheriff's Conference a couple of weeks ago in Reno. While I was there, I had the opportunity of, of touring, uh, their jail facility. You know, one of the things that they talked about was their jail reform bill, which is based, and I understand the reason for the jail reform. The jail reform bill, the reason for it is because they don't believe that all people are, are treated equally. If you have a good job and have money, you're able to post bell and get out. If you don't have a job and don't have any money, you can't post bell and can't get out. What Nevada's bell reform is, is that it's. What Nevada's bell reform is, is that it's based upon their income. And it gives the judge the opportunity of being able to review each person's individual circumstances and tailor the bell to fit their individual circumstances, but it's not, uh, you know, get out a free gel card. They, they, there's still something that they have to meet in order to be able to, to post their bell and get out. So, I, I think that there's a lot better options than what we currently have in front of us right now.
I talked to Shane Manuelli this morning about this bill and he said it's gonna make their job ver- very difficult because they, as public defenders, they, those people get out and they won't know where to find them. They don't have information, they, at least now they, that's, they're held, so they can meet with them and work, do their jobs, so it's gonna be tough.
And there's some other bills that we've been concerned with, uh, there's one that's a body worn camera bill that, again, I understand the purpose behind it, but, but I also, uh, we have some concerns over it. Initially, the ACLU wanted that bill written so that if a body camera turns off for any reason, that the deputy or the officer can be charged criminally for it, which doesn't take into account anything. I mean, it doesn't take into account, uh, walking into a situation where it would be inappropriate for that camera to be on. Uh, it doesn't take into account mechanical failures, it doesn't take into account, you know, anything, any, any reason that that camera may have legitimately been turned off. Uh, so we initially opposed it very strongly. They've made some changes to it. Where, and, and part of the reason that we, we've kind of been supporting it is because we'd rather have the law passed than have a rule come down from the bench, uh, stating that because a camera failed for some reason, what the, you know, what a jury can consider or not consider. So, we'd rather have some type of control over, you know, the, the language of the bill. That we're, there's been some additional language that's been introduced to that bill here very recently that we're concerned with, so we're still working with the legislators on that and so we're not sure where that one's going to go or where it's gonna end up yet, so. There, and there's, there's several others that we've been watching and, and involved in, uh, you know, so this is just the nature of this time of year and we hope that it will have good results and we are grateful for, uh, you know, our local representatives here and, and the help that they've given us and listening to our concerns and taking those back to the hills, we appreciate that very much. Are there any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it. Shalon?
Good morning.
Corrections.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just go through this report with you that's on your, I gave to you. The revenue for our budget on that third page is, is interesting, so our gel revenue for the two thousand and nineteen year was about eight, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight, so for a, for normal, the gels don't usually make that much money, but that's a, that's a pretty good number for revenue. Um, our cost per mils are, they've gone up a little bit, but they're at a dollar, a dollar and two cents per mil for our inmates. Um, still very significantly lower than the rest of the state. Um, our total bookings, so in the fourth quarter, we reported three hundred and seventy-two. Um, we're at five hundred and sixty-five, so the increase in bookings over just this last quarter have been very large, especially, especially for the holiday season. Um, our inmates transported, last time I reported.
Go on, what, what do you attribute that?
Well, more crime. Um, we, we do.
I just wondered if there was some trend that you saw.
No, you know, usually, in, around the holidays, we usually go down because they spend more time at, with their families and stuff like that, but yes, we're, we're definitely quite a bit higher. Uh, with our transportation department, last time I reported that I felt that, um, we reported three hundred and eighty-one transports in that fourth quarter, um, I felt like that was misrepresented because of our shift, we had to shift staff everywhere and it wasn't being reported right. But our total inmates transported in this first quarter, um, seven hundred and eighty-nine. So, we are, we about doubled and so that's, I believe that that was misreported in the fourth, the fourth quarter last time. And again, that's because we have more bookings, more inmates, more federal transports. Uh, we've had to, uh, stop our work crew, we stopped the work crew as of December fifth. Um, we had to take that, um, officer and put him on the line. Um, so we're hoping to, once we get some relief there, we're hoping to get him back out there, especially when this, when spring comes around. Um, our vacancies, uh, we had a clerical vacancy, we had Deputy Dunn that left, so that left us eight vacancies, that included the three positions that you, that you allowed us to have. Um, we've had, we took from the sheriff's office Laura Darley, so maybe they'll, they, they got a good one in place of her too though, but, um, we transfer people back and forth. Um, we have our three guys that are in the academy, they're doing really well. Um, they should graduate probably about May and then they'll come to us on an FTO status. Our medical, our full-time medical, they closed that, um, application process, they did have one applicant, so when it says no applicants, that was a misprint there. Um, we have our two part-time deputies, they are picking up some of that overtime, which is good. And we have two applicants going through the background process because we're putting, we're having two in front of you today for approval. We had, um, one start yesterday and one start today. Uh, our planned projects, we have, we're replacing the benches in booking. Um, we have seven cells down there in booking and they've had these benches in them that are wood. Um, they come out on a metal, the metal pieces hold up the wood there and there's the slots in between them. What we've had to use our, uh, our booking cells for a lot is our enhanced welfare monitoring and our suicide prevention monitoring. Um, it's kind of turning into like a, kind of a mental health watch situation down there and so those, they can't put their mattresses up on those wood benches, so we've re, we're starting to remove those and actually put some cement benches that will actually fit those mattresses on there. Um, so they're not all sleeping on the floor. And, and they're gonna, uh, Mike's gonna start working on the air handler motors, um, on the roof. Some other activities that we have going, uh, we've started our gel standards. Those are a, a very large undertaking for us. Um, in the year, there's six hundred and five of them, they're really good because they tell us the rationale for the standard, what we can do to be, what we have to do to be in compliance. And so we submit all of, um, our policy and all of these proofs that, that we put in and then it helps prevent liability when we can show that we're compliant to the standards. Um, another large, uh, project that we have going is the Legislature Gel Restitution Study. They're really looking into pay for stay. Um, it's reported to the Commission on Crime and Juvenile Justice, or Criminal and Juvenile Justice, and it's a, it's a large packet, um, with tons of information. It's sure taken our office manager quite a bit of time and effort to do that study. Um, I believe in the end, they're, they're just questioning our pay for stay policies where we've been charging inmates to stay.
Think they'll take, try to take that away or is the other jail still?
Um, I think that's why they're questioning it and I, I predict that, but I don't, I don't know, we'll see how it turns out, but they're, they've, they asked for a lot of information initially, we sent it up and then they came back with just as much. So, it's, it's been a, it's been a large process. Do you have any questions for me?
Could you explain that pay to stay thing a little bit?
So, we, for pay for stay, we charge ten dollars per day for an inmate to stay. Um, that's if they are not on probation. If they are just, if they, they get sentenced to jail on a county charges and we can charge that ten, ten dollars a day. Now, if they're sentenced to, excuse me, if they're sentenced to prison on probation to the county, then we, then the state actually pays us that, that money. So, that's a very, that's a very good thing for us, so we don't want to lose it for that reason. Um, we don't recoup a lot of money for pay for stay for our, just county, our county charges.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a request, uh, we've been working with the Forest Service to, uh, the Iron County to be able to take over the Vermillion Castle Campground that's on the road to Yankee Meadows.
Okay.
And, uh, we need a lot of help from the work crew when they get reinstated, so.
Okay, when are they doing that?
Well, as soon as the weather will permit, yeah, and if they can come and help us. And we'll have a lot of equipment in there too from the road department and so on, but we need a lot of handwork done also.
Okay.
To start to bring that back to where it can be used.
Yeah, Deputy Burr's very anxious to get back out there, but we, we, we're using even more we can right now.
I, I know, I understand you, have him give me a call if you would.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Thanks, Shalon. Okay, we got everybody, uh, we'll go ahead and take a, let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break and then we'll resume, uh, the meeting at ten after.
Yeah, and they can lay in. So, yeah, I just might find there. He goes, the level of accountability was in there, our way of beating the level of people. That's how we beat them over the head.
This guy was very amiable and Mike, where than, you know, he works with her. Yeah, I'll do well, but, uh, anyway, hopefully they're getting some.
Anything else I can do for us?
Uh.
Guys, can we call for his?
Do you know, we're, we're, we've been going, so we're having a court.
Yes, and, uh, I'm planning to be, uh, be there. We'll be coming back from Pangu, so I should be there, I did text. I'm not able to make it, can you give me a phone number to call?
Oh, yeah.
I'll be all either way.
If you make it back early, we're gonna ha- all have lunch. Parts of the Chinese place down there.
Okay. Hey, cause it's here in Perry.
We're not right here.
Yeah, okay. No, give me fifteen minutes, if I can get back a little closer.
You know that, by the way, the crow fly, it's twenty states. Yeah, we don't have fat train around here.
No.
All right, thanks so much.
I gotta take your.
Go ahead, I'll talk to you.
Right back.
Davis County, it says you're Democrat, she's a Democrat, she's a, she's, she was third committee attorney. We told her, you know, this is just like New York, no, no, it's not like New York, it's just like, yeah, it's just exactly what I mean. It's like, you kept pasted it, you know, you ever wish you could just be a little bit? I know, right? Yeah, they, you know, they fixed a few little things and there's a few good bills, but for the most part, just fail.
Fill the need to fix things that aren't broken.
They had a re, they had a restrictive, it's a three bill. They're making, for everyone they pass.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's the thing, that's, you know, ninety percent of it. Even when they pass a bill, it's something that's already covered. You know, there's something else that already covers that, that you don't even need.
Sometimes people are making political hay, but.
Yeah, I gotta feel like I'm accomplishing, accomplishing something.
Or at least look like I am. Speaking of which, in our busyness and with Mike, we never got the letter. I, I prepared the D, but we never actually recorded it because we're gonna have the letter for the pickings, for the, those questionable roads that were, um, anyway. Mike is probably gonna try and just discuss a little bit during non-delegated, just so you don't get caught flatly on it. I don't know that there's much we can do, um, but maybe we can make, maybe you can.
So, give it up some time on that.
Yeah, he'll, he'll probably pipe up, but yeah. Um, and just basically, I, it, it probably one of the situations where you discuss it under non-delegated and, and if there's an action to be taken, we can notify it during the day.
A week, okay, very good, okay.
For us, every day's the same. If it's on the patrol side.
If it's on the patrol side, we try.
I, I stand by my reasons. I just, I just, from a public safety, from a liability. Yeah. Certainly wasn't ever, you know, properly dedicated.
Well, well, that's, that's why I.
Peter, don't stay on long enough. Shut off.
So the pen is separated between the jail and the patrol.
Let me know when you're ready, John.
Okay.
So when you come in, you're to the left and it's to the right.
So we're, when you're looking at the base of the building.
All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, resume our county commission meeting. Uh, before we get into agenda, item number one, public comments, Commissioner Adams, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I just a couple of things. You know, something that's really tickled me is the vegetation treatments between here and Cedar City on the front. I don't know if you've noticed, I, I went by one day and there was five track hoes up there with those masticators taking out, uh, pinions, juniper trees. So some of the things that they keep promising are happening and they've created some great fire breaks there. So as you go between here and Cedar, if you haven't noticed though, especially about from Summit on, you'll see where they've taken out a lot of trees and it's, it's great to have those vegetation treatments. Uh, HB one twenty-five did pass and has been signed by the governor, so we're, we're grateful for that. So the Division of Wildlife can go in when there's, uh, areas with specific problems with, uh, predator damage and they can step up their, their work there. Uh, Commissioner Blake and I were able to attend the NACO Legislative Conference along with Cindy Bullock, and, uh, I think that was the only ones from our county. But anyway, it was tremendous and like two weeks before, uh, they changed the schedule to add President Trump. So that was amazing. So he spoke to the, to the whole group and, uh, there, and he was talking a lot about the economy and a bunch of people jumped up and said, four more years. And he says, no, wait. He said, this isn't a political rally. We're talking about the, the, uh, finances here, you know, we're talking about the economy here. So anyway. But it was, it was good. And, uh, Colin Powell also spoke, so that's about one of the most amazing days of my life to hear from the, the president and Colin Powell in the same meeting. And he signed, uh, three thousand books and gave them away his book. It's called It Worked For Me In Life And, And Leadership, yeah. And, uh, anyway, he, what an amazing individual he is, and he gave us all some, some great, uh, advice. Then also, uh, we ganged up on USDA AFIS, which is Animal Damage Control, 'cause we've had some problems here in the state with that, uh, program. Uh, we met with Janet Bucknall, who was, uh, just a great individual. Mike Warden worked with her for many years and, and, uh, anyway, she's gonna help us hopefully solve that problem. I won't go into the, you know, all the details of the problem, but just not getting the predator problem taken care of the way that it needs to be taken care of. And I also, uh, ran into Bill Lee from Utah County. He at least didn't come to UAC anymore, but he goes at NACO and, and he said he hopes with this election that maybe things will change there and, and, uh, they'll come back to NACO, or I mean to UAC hopefully, so. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. Um, we're working on a, uh, the pit out there at, uh, Vandenberg and Bumblebee on the corner there. It's getting really large. Uh, our road department's taking a lot of pit run out of that. They've crushed a lot of gravel. It's getting to be large. We're, we're working with Army Corps on a stream alteration permit. Paul Monroe's working on that. I, I met with him up while I was up in Salt Lake a couple of weeks ago and to do a stream alteration permit to do some recharge in that pit. It'll be a great project. Um, you know, I, I wanted to bring something up this last on, at the Rural Caucus on Friday. It was probably the most, uh, visual, uh, presentation I've ever seen on pilt and how, how, um, we are at such, such a disadvantage in these western states that's predominantly owned by the federal government. They took an example in Saratoga Springs. They took an example right in the middle of Saratoga Springs. There's a twenty acre parcel right in the middle. And, uh, they said, as is with pilt funding, they get fifty-five dollars for that twenty acre parcel. They said, if that land as is without being developed, they would get twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars versus the fifty-five. If it was developed, they'd be getting two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three ninety-three. And I thought that was the best visual I've seen of, um, some call it, uh, payment in lieu of trillions. Or, you know, and, and so, or a pittance in lieu of, of, uh, trillions. But it's, um, that's just a, that was just a really good visual I wanted to bring up of, of, of how that, uh, you know, of how that works with pilt. And I know there, there's some efforts with Senator Lee and, and some that are looking at reali-, some reallocation formulas and different things. Um, so there's that. There was the HB one ninety, it, it was not adopted, thank goodness. It was a bill that would force counties to provide, uh, ambulance service even though we already have it. So that was that, there was, I guess there's some counties that are bickering up north, uh, two, one's mooching off the other one and so they proposed legislation to force, force that to happen, but there was some unintended consequences, which would affect counties like ours where we have a good ambulance service called Cross. And so, but thank goodness that was not adopted. Anyway, there's, uh, lots going on up legislature. There's, uh, I guess that ends this weekend on Thursdays, so. Um, that's all, about all I had. Um, we'll go ahead and move into our public comment portion of our meeting. Uh, there'd be a three minute time limit per speaker and should not repeat others' comments and, um, only for items that are not on the agenda.
Morning Commissioners, uh, I'm pretty well known. My name's William Presgrove and I'm a citizen of the county. I wrote this because I wanted to stay close to that three minute limit. Says, I'm here today to declare to you that there is a parallel between the following scripture and the first article of the Utah Constitution. The scripture says, "There is a law irrevocably decreed in heaven before the foundations of this world upon which all blessings are predicated. And when we obtain any blessing from God, it is by obedience to that law upon which it is predicated." And the Utah Constitution, the first article says, "All men have the inherent and inalienable right to enjoy and defend their lives and liberties to acquire, possess, and protect property." The word irrevocably and inalienable are synonyms, along with words like immutable and unchangeable. Looking at each part of the latter statement, all men means every individual regardless of gender. Inherent means belonging by nature. Inalienable obviously means God given. The right to enjoy and defend their lives and liberties means the ability to partake of their existence and agency and to de- deny others the ability to take these guarantees away from them. Now, as a part of the, uh, now as to the part of the, that states that, uh, they have an immutable right to acquire, possess, and protect property, one must have that for, without such, there is no existence of liberty that makes the individual able to enjoy life. Because some past commission decided that the county had the right to alter the meaning of these words, the individuals of the county don't have the rights, as reaffirmed by the first article in the, in the Utah Constitution. I have been told that, quote, "The right of my fist ends where the nose of the other individual begins." And this is very true. However, it's a two edged sword because the right of the county's fist ends where the nose of my property begins as well. The zoning code of this county destroys and defies its citizens' inalienable right to enjoy and defend their life and liberty by acquiring, possessing, and protecting their property. The difference between the two statements is that one deals with all blessings and the other refers to the blessings received by being, uh, faithful stewards over the property that one has, has obtained or has given. The sole remedy to this altered state of affairs is to recognize the phil-, uh, the fallacy of the existing zoning code and to rectify its unflinching grasp on the rights of the citizens by rescinding the current wording of the code and restoring the responsibility for maintaining the good order of, in the county to the citizens themselves. It requires the commission to have faith in the citizens of this county, or that the citizens of this county can and will treat each other with mutual respect and dignity. No blessing can be obtained without the voluntary adherence to the supreme law of do unto others as you would have them do unto you. That is the only way that the rights of one's fist ends at the nose of his neighbor. Any abrogation of that principle by overbearing regulations destroys any hope of the individual's chance to obtain the blessings promised by living correct principles and being good stewards over their property. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll move to convene as the Board of Equalization and go to item number two. Review for approval or denial, applications for continued property tax exemption and new applications for property tax exemptions which have been submitted by religious, educational, or charitable organizations requesting tax exempt status on personal or real property for the two thousand twenty tax year. Christine?
Okay. All right, um, we have a, a, a number of changes this year. Uh, the, the top paper I gave you, the one that's got like five pages in it, is kind of everybody, whether there was a change or not. The, the two page one that, uh, I gave you also is an overall of the changes, whether it was vehicles that they were purchasing or selling, um, or properties that were bought or sold. So just to kind of hit the, the high points, I guess. Um, the, the first one, um, on the smaller sheet, which I think is probably the best one to go by, um, is the Assembly of Jesus Christ. Um, they have in the past had three parcels of land. Um, and for your information, the Assembly of Jesus Christ is the church that's down on Holy Oak Lane, just down the street from H and R, whatever it is now, Perrin Home Center. Um, it used to be Grace Christian Church. Anyway, they had three parcels of land which had been receiving, um, full or partial exempt status. And they had the properties resurveyed, which was, um, I don't know why they divided the lines where they did, but at any rate, so what, um, I am recommending is that on, on, on the shorter, on the two page paper, the first three are the ones that are going to be coming off because they don't exist anymore. The next three are the new parcels. So the first parcel, A dash five one one dash four dash one, is the church and the parking lot. Or consists of the church and the parking lot. However, there's two point three seven acres, um, but not all of that is being used for parking for the church, so we're recommending just one acre of that be exempt. The second parcel, A dash five one one dash four, is a, a point two three acre property that is next to, um, Holy Oak Lane on the northwest corner of their property. And it is, um, I'm recommending that that one not be exempt because it is not being used. And then the third parcel, A dash five one one dash four dash two, in the back of that property, uh, to the, the south of Holy Oak Lane, um, there is a home that is used as, um, a home that would help somebody that's either passing through or under hard times. It's also used for youth activities, uh, and such. And, uh, it is on point five three acres. And I'm recommending that that one be considered, um, totally exempt.
But that, is that point six three?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that what I said or not?
That's five three, but that's.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Point six three acres, yes. Okay, so, um, Cedar Valley Church, um, they have actually sold one vehicle, uh, or not one vehicle, one trailer and, uh, purchased another one. So that is what that is about, is the two thousand three pace trailer. John, are you following along? Can you, can you say that Centro whatever? Cause I don't speak that language. I can't even figure it out. Centro Cristiano El.
Oh.
Shaday or something like that. Anyway. Um, that is a church building that is behind, it is west of Motel Six, just off of Center Street there in Cedar City. And I'm requesting that that, um, receive the full exemption. Um, Christ Church, I want to come back to that one. Um, so Christ the King, we're just adding a vehicle on that one. Um, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, uh, they have added, uh, two parcels of land, um, that they have purchased that are north of the temple and that they have turned into parking lots. Um, and so those I am recommending that they can, um, receive the full exempt status on both of those, B dash two thousand dash one and B dash two thousand dash two. And then they've added a vehicle. Um, one thing I just realized I didn't include on that is, uh, and they have been receiving it. I just didn't put it on, on this particular list, is that their Bishop Storehouse, uh, they're off of two hun-, or east on two hundred north, uh, is point four thirteen acres, but they're only receiving an exempt status on one point six three acres. Uh, the, the rest of it is just raw land. So, and then, uh, the Care and Share.
Is that's, is that a change or has it been that way?
No, it's been that way, yeah. I just, I, I didn't have it on this particular sheet. I just wanted to say that, yes, it was only getting a partial. Uh, the Care and Share in the past has had, uh, three parcels of land that have been receiving, um, exempt status. And they have sold two of those, and so they will be removed from exempt status and, uh, be moved to taxable. Southwest Behavioral Health Center, um, I'm really not certain why they sent in application because they are government, however, I'm glad that they did because we discovered a problem. They, uh, purchased, well, let's see, um, on, on the list of Southwest Public Health, the very bottom one, the B, uh, dash eight oh seven dash eight oh eight dash one dash eight two two, located at thirty-three north, three hundred east. So that's just through the block and a half of the Justice Center building there in Cedar. So you kind of have that general area. Apparently back in the nineteen nineties-ish, um, Iron County owned. Iron County owned two parcels of land, one on the west side of two hundred, I have to say, west side of two hundred East and the north side, or excuse me. Let me back up. The west side of two hundred East and the east side of two hundred, of three hundred East. At any rate, they own through the block. There we go. They own through the block. They sold outright to Southwest Behavioral Center, the parcel that was on two hundred East. And then the other conjoined into a complex that was on the other side of the block. And when they sent this application in, because it was a new one, I was going through, pulling up the properties, and when I popped that account number in, it came up Iron County. I was going, well, why are they applying for Iron County? So, I asked around, I talked to Dan, I talked to, I think I talked, did I talk to you about that one? I did talk to Carrie in the assessor's office. And I contacted the the building department, as well as Reed, to see if they had any idea about why Southwest Behavioral would be claiming they owned the property that's in Iron County's name. Honestly, I didn't know that we owned and we weren't receiving any receivables or payments for this property currently. So, Reed, I sent all the information to Reed. He did some research, contacted the gentleman that had sent me the initial paperwork. And he said that, yes, they had set up an agreement and that they were paying us monthly for this property. The problem is, it was twenty years ago that they said that they paid the property off. And apparently, a deed was never written up, or at least it was never recorded, to transfer the property from Iron County to Southwest Behavioral. So, we're in the process of trying to find documentation because they can only say that they cut the check in March of two thousand. I don't have any records that go back that far either online. I may have a box in the basement that I can maybe find. I don't know. It might have been purged by then with our moves. So, anyway, we're, that one's kind of up in the air. But at any rate, the other, one, two, three, four, the other six do qualify, mainly because they are a government entity and that they are under the umbrella of the government, are funded by the county and the state and federal governments, so they would be considered exempt. So, it's just kind of, we're waiting to find out, really, who owns this one, and I'm pretty sure it's going to be Southwest Behavioral. Okay. Southwest Wildlife Foundation. They just purchased a new vehicle. And then turn, they have three properties that they have realigned the the property lines, basically. It was a ninety, a point nine zero parcel, and they have divided it into point three zero parcels. So, it's pretty much the same. And then the second sheet is just all vehicles that have been purchased. No, these are the ones that have been sold, excuse me. The second page are just vehicles that have been sold by various entities, so we don't really need to go over those. Let's see. Okay, so the one that is remaining is Christ's Church. And I do have a representative of Christ Church here. His name is Benjamin Schaefer, and he is an attorney for the church. Last year, their exemption was denied for the properties in question because we've we felt that the properties were not being used on a continual bas- basis. We weren't able to access the properties in that it's behind locked gates. And when our appraiser went out there, he didn't have access. So, let's see. Oh, did you have a map? You do? Okay. Trevor is the appraiser that handles that area. And
Where's this at? Where's this located?
How would you?
So, between rural junction and Modena.
There's a pyramid. Does that help you? Nope. I don't know where it's at. Apparently, the their main building of worship is a pyramid-shaped building. Here's a picture of it. And, let's see, what else we got here? Benjamin, maybe you could come up and kind of, that separate sheet of paper that I gave you that's just got lines drawn on it to outline parcels, that's the one. Okay, so those are the properties in question. So, what what is this?
That is the Bishop Storehouse.
Benjamin, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Benjamin Schaefer. I'm attorney for Christ Church. Yes, the Bishop Storehouse particularly looks rather rundown right now. The lower story is used for storage of food items and other necessities. The upper story on it is used usually for meetings. Sometimes, for example, we had a meal there in December when we had a funeral at the temple for everybody who came, because after all, it is kind of in the middle of nowhere, and people drive in from other states and things like that. They're going to need some food before we send them on their way, so. And we do intend to refurbish and paint it and finish up some of that work on the front this year.
It is on.
Because it's in pretty bad shape.
Which which property is that one? On the shed property?
No, that's on the same property as the temple.
Okay, so that's
On the ten acres? Ten point three acres?
Yeah, ten point three-six acres, but we're only asking for partial exemption on that.
Right, and then this is, is this the shed?
Actually, no, that's Don Horner, who passed away this last year's house. We're not asking for an exemption on that portion.
Okay. So, I don't know what that is for later. Oops. Okay, and so that's
So, how does this usually work? Is it just the the structure that you're using plus parking? That's the, what is being used for the religious purpose is what's
That's the basic idea for the exemption, is only things that are used for the exclusive religious purposes.
And so, on the ten point three-six acres would be, both pictures you've showed us so far?
Correct, and that's where we're requesting five acres of exemption.
Okay, so here's an overall. That's the cemetery.
So, the same with the cemetery is, this this photograph may be outdated. I believe that the
Did you say twenty seventeen? On this version, what we're looking at is, yeah, the areas.
I think the areas are back like in twenty sixteen. These are, we don't have pictometry out there for right now.
So, we haven't surveyed it, but what I've outlined here, I believe the cemetery now extends the the fence, the fencing, I believe, goes to about here, the parking, about equally to that side.
Because I told him one acre initially.
However, the five acres that I wrote down here is probably more like three, because really, we're only claiming this boneyard and shed area here above the road. Just that section. And that photograph was of this residence here.
Okay. Okay. So, this is the temple. This is the temple, and they're requesting
The southern half or so.
Of that parcel.
What's the one? You said you changed from five to three.
Oh, this one right here. This one right here. This is that, the house that is not being used for anything, apparently. So, they're requesting this area that has this, the sheds on it.
Sheds for what?
It's where we store things like the the backhoe that we use to dig the graves and do other maintenance on these buildings. There's also a bit of a boneyard there where we, that we've used for parts as well as for for development. So, one of the things with like the temple, it was in worst repair a couple of years ago. It might have been partly the wake-up call with losing our tax exemption. We were out there with the youth programs and a bunch of other things to fix things up in the last year and a half, partly because of that. And so, yeah, that's where all the equipment and workshop is, where we, where we have the stuff.
Okay, and are you requesting that whole parcel or a portion?
Well, you see, the parcel itself goes all the way down here. But it's really only what's on the northeast side of these two roads that is the part, the portion that we're requesting.
And that's the one that comes out at three acres there?
That's what I was saying, is is that five acres would probably be too much. It was my, on my original request.
Yeah, he requested five, five, and five.
But really, it's more five here is probably right, but this is probably more like three, and this is probably more like two or three.
And what are these being used for out there?
This is the cemetery. And what we show is right here, and that's why it was recommended just one acre. And he's saying that it has since been extended in the fencing.
Scale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Five acres of this would be about here. Five acres of this would be about here. And this is a twenty-acre parcel, so five acres would be
And that's why this one was going to be down to three, go down to three?
This is twenty-acre parcel, so five would be
Okay, so, yeah. So, yeah, this is less than five, this is less than five, but I think that one's still about five.
So, you're you're requesting five on this one, even though
Well, we did originally, but I'm saying, really, it's it's less.
Maybe two and a half?
So, you're down to what? Because we need to get that in the minutes.
I I would still like to request, say, two point five on this.
Two point five there.
And that's probably two.
Five here.
With his line there, I'm saying, let's make this two instead of three. The way he's drawn that line, and I trust his estimation. I'm saying, let's make this, let's make this two point five or two, and let's make this one two. And, but I still want the five on that because we do use this as a staging area. This is a pile of coal for fuel. There's a couple of silos.
All right, so two and a half, two and five?
Yes, that's what I'm requesting.
All right, so Okay, so then on, oops, over here. So, then on Christ Church, if we go by, I got that right set up.
So, that'd be five, two, and two point five on your list?
Let's see, the temple would be five. Oops.
Correct.
The sheds are the
Cemetery was two point five.
Would be two and two point five is what you're, okay.
Sorry, but even if we figure out the the acreage, I think we still have to talk about Dan Justin, not our county auditor. We still have to talk about whether it qualifies for religious exemption based on use and and all of that stuff. I mean, so there's the, there's the technical aspect of the acreage, but we have to address that the bigger issue, and then if there is going to be an exemption granted, what is the acreage is kind of the secondary issue, so. I'm just saying, we may be getting the cart before the horse in talking about the acreage, but, sorry, Christine?
Okay, so what, right, right now, what I would recommend for the cemetery is the two point five acres. Because to me, that one's not in question. I mean, it's a, it's either a cemetery or it's not. Okay, so that is used for a cemetery. And it does, as as Dan mentioned, it does come down to use. And to be honest, I'm not sure how it can be determined. Are you still here? Yeah, you're still here, Ben. Sorry. I didn't know if you had gone down. Okay, can you explain on the the temple property and the outbuildings, what it is used for, how often, and oh, was that you trying to pull it in? Or is that something different? Okay.
No.
Sorry. Okay, I don't know, my glasses on. Anyway, what it's used for and basically how often? Can you explain that for the temple?
Sure, the 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 temple building, much like some of you will be familiar with in the LDS movement tradition, is used as a temple. That means it's used for ordinances for the living and the dead. However, we also have what we term a solemn assembly room, which occupies the main floor of that building, which we do use in a less exclusive manner than some LDS temples are used. For example, when we had Don Horner's funeral in December, the most recent one, we use the solemn assembly room for those funeral services so that members and non-members who are friends and family of his could come into that temple. If someone wants to go out there and see the properties more specifically, that room would be one room that we would be willing to show others. So, it's used for regular worship services, it's used for funerals, things like that.
I don't think we have any question at all on the temple building, but I think it would be the others around, at least I don't. I mean, I I can see that's obviously a religious building, but but maybe the the others around it and the amount of space needed?
The particularly rundown-looking building that you were showing a picture of is the Bishop Storehouse. It is used, yes, that's that's this picture here, is used also for those meetings. So, for example, like I said, the upper story being mostly empty is, has been used for meetings as well as food, service, things like that. There's a bathroom in there, too, for when people visit the property. The lower story is used for storage, primarily for food storage and distribution. And so, yeah, much like another Bishop Storehouse, if you're familiar with that term, it also has those similar functions.
It's a charitable.
Correct. It's used exclusively.
Not selling the food, it's a charitable.
Correct. There's no income from any of that. It is, it's just used for the community. And and honestly, for anybody else out there in the rural area who would like to request, though, I don't know how often that actually occurs, it is, it is open to, for the public to to use as well. And then the other, the other things that you may see on the map are silos, which have been used for grain. It's been primarily used for feed grain for animals, which are not kept on this parcel, but which are also, those foods are usually processed at the Bishop Storehouse and used for charitable purposes. There's also fuel storage and things like that. There's some big wood piles. Members of the community receive wood in the winter, also coal from out there. So, that's what some of those other outbuildings are used for, as well as to some extent to service the temple. There are, one of the things that you might have hard to identify on the map is the water tank. It's, you know, like a water tower, but a little bit further up the hill that services the temple as well as those outbuildings, so.
And is that on the ten-acre parcel?
It is, yeah.
I guess the question I would have, do we need to have the assessor's office go and survey?
And and if that's necessary, if we could arrange a time, we can meet them out there and show them around if they'd like.
I mean, I I think the buildings are exempt. We just need to know how much property we would include with those to be reasonable. If any of you have other thoughts from the assessor's office on how you may do this. I I mean, I know, you know, most church property, you know, in the county or anywhere, has it delineated either fence or landscaping or whatever to delineate the the property that's used and that's and that's maintained. the property that's used and it's, and it's maintained, that goes along with the building, so I guess that, that's really the only question in my mind, is how much property?
Right.
Well, I would say, and I, maybe you could talk a little bit more about the usage, cause I, cause my concern is, is even if it's designated for something, but it's not actively being used, I don't. That's what was, was the question in the past. You know, an occasional funeral, uh, once in a while, I don't know if that's, you know what I mean? If that's designated as used, as being actively as a church, it's different than it's not just ownership, it hasn't been used.
If you're meeting there every week, that's different than you said you've been there in December, but prior to that, is it just once a year? And then is, does that meet that criteria?
That's what I was hoping to get at.
Sure, um, we've, the, um, we've, did have um, three major events there this past year. There was, there were two funerals um, this year, as well as there, in May, for um, about two weeks in May. Members of our church came, came from all over to be there for about two weeks. That's when we expanded the cemetery a little bit, it's when we did some repairs on some of the buildings. Um, it's when we had youth activities and programs going on um, out there, beautification project, that is something we do every year. So, the application, for example, asks um, about how many hours per month do you use it? And I was estimating about eight per month, but I estimated eight per month based upon a yearly average, cut down to a month. Um, when, when there are more people there, there are some residents who still live out there. They do have weekly meetings, they usually hold them in the Bishop's Storehouse rather than the temple. Um, because it's a smaller space, easy to heat and clean, um, and since there's only, you know, a dozen or two dozen people at the most who come to those meetings on a weekly basis. Um, they don't wanna use the full temple facility for that.
Are these buildings being used for as residences at all, or just?
Oh, not, not these, not the buildings that we're asking for. But when I talk about members of the community, if you'll see on the larger map, there's housing off to the, um, off to the west of the parcels we're talking about and things like that. So, so yeah, I would say that the temple is probably not used for a couple of months in a row. Then it might be used for twelve hours um, over a weekend, then it might not be used again for another couple of months. So, it is true that it isn't an every Sunday uh, place of worship that's being used all the time, the temple. But the Bishop's Storehouse usually is what's being used every weekend.
I agree with Commissioner Adams that we need to go out and, and do an accurate survey of exactly what's being used and, and identify that and then bring, bring that back so we can, or do we bring it back, or how do we do that, Christine?
Yeah, um, yeah, you, you can, um. Just kind of table this one, pending further information.
Just this, just this one item on this?
Uh huh, yeah, just this uh, group of properties. Unless you have, you know, problems with others, but specifically this one, you can um, pull that one out.
It's time of the essence, I mean, how soon do you need to kind of get this nailed down?
It starts bumping into um, Cindy's time, especially if there's properties that are considered exempt that uh, we now need to place a value on, or, you know, something like that. Um, so, if we could get it done before the next commission meeting, so that, you know, gives us two weeks to get out there and visit with somebody and get accurate measurements and.
Cindy, is that possible to?
Yeah, we'll take Christine and go out whenever we can make an appointment to go with her.
Okay.
It'll take five, six hours out there.
Okay.
Get out there and do all that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I also just got a text, sorry, from um, the building department that must be listening to this, that says um, they don't have a conditional use permit for a cemetery, so they're just questioning on the cemetery, so.
So we need to figure that one out?
But if we're coming back in two weeks anyway, we can probably figure that out.
So you might need to go in and talk to Reed Erickson, our planner, and, and see what we need to do to satisfy that?
And the conditional use permits are approved by the planning commission. And they meet the first Thursday of the month. So if you just spoke with Reed Erickson and the, the building department, and you could be on the agenda for the next month.
Yeah, I think cemeteries have to be designated by the state, but I'm not.
Just talk about the, the, the conditional use permit process itself.
Alright, so, um, sounds like we have a plan then for Christ Church that we will just table these three parcels. Um, until we can get out there, um, survey the property, um, determine its use. Um, and then double check on the uh, legitimacy of the cemetery. Uh, at least as far as the codes are concerned and, and um, they can get that taken care of. Um, if the planning is only, only meets once a month, they've already missed it for this month, so. Um, but we can, you know, we can cross that bridge when we get to it, so. So anyway, um.
So I'll entertain a motion on that.
Okay.
Part.
Okay, I move that uh, regarding the three parcels owned by Christ Church Incorporated. Uh, that we table decision on those pending uh, survey by the Iron County Assessor's Office uh, of the property and uh, to, you know, determine uh, how much property is reasonably being used with the buildings for religious purposes. And uh, the cemetery, it may take some more time, but that'll, you'll have to work through, and they'll have to work through the situation with this uh, conditional use permit on the cemetery, and bring that back to us.
Okay, I'll second that, so it's been moved and seconded that we uh, the three items listed on this charitable education, educational religi, religious changes uh, form, uh, Christ Church Incorporated, parcel number E dash seventeen fifty-five dash two, E dash seventeen fifty-five dash three. And E dash seventeen fifty-five dash three dash two, um, as, as was explained by Commissioner Adams uh, to uh, do some follow-up surveys and, and get that accurate, and possibly a permit for the use of the cemetery location. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay.
You ready for a motion on everything else then at this point?
On all of these?
All changes. Okay, I move that uh, we approve all the recommended uh, changes for the charitable educational religious uh, changes for twenty twenty. Uh, most of them being recommended as exempt, uh, I guess I'll mention the two. Assembly of Jesus Christ, A dash five one one dash four, Lot West of Church, point twenty-three acres. Three, point two three acres, recommended to not be exempt. And also the one above that, A dash five one one dash four dash one is two point three seven acres, recommend that one acre of those, two point three seven, be exempt. Let's see, I guess, and then on Iron County Karen Share, we would remove from exempt status both of those properties. Southwest Behavioral Health, I said them just as you net, mentioned, but now I'm going through them individually, cause there is kind of a lot here. So Southwest Behavioral Health, parcel B dash eight oh seven dash eight oh eight dash one dash eight two two, is still being researched. It probably is in the name of Southwest Behavioral Health, but the, need deed work there, so that one we'll, we will table for now. And the others, uh, I move that we exempt all them.
And I'll second that, so it's been moved and seconded that uh, as explained by Commissioner Adams. And taking out the three items that were, with the motion before that, uh, and this is to approve the charitable educational and religious changes uh, form that Christine has gone over, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I'm still here, sorry. Okay, um, what I have next is uh, the late applications, um. Or corrections for veterans, applications that have come in since December ninth, uh, up through uh, last week. And, let's see. Okay, um, these individuals have uh, come in and completed applications and qualify for exempt status, or excuse me, not exempt, I'm just trying to switch my gears here and I didn't, for um. Uh, tax abatement um, on their property, uh, because they meet the qualifications uh, set forth by the state of Utah. Um, the first group of them, um. Have qualified and we have backdated um, and processed an abatement so that it's as if they had applied prior to um, their taxes being due in November. And so, in most of those cases, we have issued refunds, we as in the treasurer's office. Uh, and I appreciate their help immensely on processing these. Just so you're aware, what I do is I go back in and process these in last year's um, dates and then forward it to the treasurer's office, who then makes the adjustments and issues any refunds that are necessary. Um, I did have one active duty um, veteran that has applied. And uh, it's fact, it's the only one that we have currently right now, um, and then there were some, there was three different corrections. They're really adjustments because those individuals had received an increase in their veterans' abatement from um, one percentage to a higher percentage. Um, and therefore they received more funds because the program is based in part on the percentage that the VA has awarded them. So, um, in doing that, it created, excuse me, it created a, a refund for each of those. Let's see, so that is pretty much it, that's, that's all I have accumulated since December.
Okay, I move approval of the late application uh, adjustments, that the applications came in after December ninth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, and these are all concerning veterans, uh, circuit breakers and abatement.
Second that, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the late applications adjustments after December ninth, two thousand nineteen, as described. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay.
Do you want me to sign this one, or is that the? Just sign this one? I'm gonna sign that, does, is that just mine? I've got copies here, but I think we didn't actually, you would just bring us a copy later, I'll just, I'll mention that to Chanel. Cause I think she was, put them in my packet and I don't know. No, I forgot, she, she'll bring me a copy later, we'll, we'll stop doing that. Okay.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
And then what's this um, this application for exemption, we don't does this, what do we?
I think that's just ones that are already.
That, this is just informational only, we don't need to do anything with this?
Nope, nope, that was just information.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Item number four, resolution two thousand twenty dash four, is a resolution allowing the possession of concealed firearms in certain areas within buildings owned by Iron County. Who's gonna talk about that?
Commissioner Blake asked me to draft this.
I can go through it, I guess, read it?
Yeah.
So I'll just read it, uh, this is um. This is pretty simple, just read through it, it's a resolution allowing the possession of concealed firearms in certain areas within buildings owned by Iron County. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution affirms that a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed, and whereas Iron County desires to uphold the Second Amendment, and whereas Iron County desires that persons who have received a Utah concealed firearms permit be allowed to possess and conceal, carry firearms in certain areas within buildings owned by Iron County, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Iron County Commissioners, one, that the unalienable right to keep and bear arms is a fundam, is fundamental and shall not be infringed, two. Persons including Iron County employees possessing a current concealed firearms permit that is recognized by the state of Utah shall be permitted to carry and possess firearms in certain areas within buildings owned by Iron County. A, firearms shall not be permitted in courtrooms, jail areas, or other areas secured by jail personnel. And then three, no part of this resolution shall affect the privilege and responsibility that duly sworn law enforcement officers enjoy to enjoy to possess firearms as part of their duties. And that's, that's the resolution. Is there any discussion on that? Bill, would you like to come up to the mic? State your name.
My name's William Presgrove and I am a concealed carry individual. The uh, there's a lot of ambiguity in this uh, resolution that's being placed, it says certain parts of certain buildings uh, that are owned by the county. I know of no uh, um, county buildings that prohibit the uh, carry of concealed weapons outside of the courts. Uh, and things that were mentioned in there, uh, when you, when you say.
It states, it states, okay, yeah, in certain areas, in certain areas within buildings owned by Iron County, okay?
Right, that is ambiguous.
So you're concerned about that word certain?
That is not defined.
Okay.
You cannot have a resolution that, that leaves uh, such an ambiguous, an undefined uh, section in, in the uh, resolution.
I, I can't speak for Commissioner Blake, but I wonder if that's, he used that, that word because of the the two A where it talks about you can't have it in courtrooms and jails and those things.
But that, that already exists, so if it's not broke, don't fix it.
I tend to agree with the speaker that uh, maybe we need to put all buildings except. And then, you know, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna allow it in all build, all county buildings, then I guess we should state that and not be ambiguous. Uh, and then have, and then list our exceptions.
Or, or what's your point, Bill, I mean, are you saying?
My point is.
We don't need it?
Right, we don't even need it because all county buildings, uh, you can carry concealed in all of those buildings. Uh, with the exception of the courthouse, like it, like it is stipulated there. So, why put in an ordinance or whatever, saying that you can when you already can?
Mike, can you speak to this at all, I, I don't know, I, what, what prompted this, or?
I'm not sure what prompted it either. I would say there's a pretty important distinction between a resolution and an ordinance. Uh, this would not have the effect of, of being a law in any real sense, it's just a, pretty much a statement of policy in, in a large degree from the county commission, it's, this wouldn't have a lot of legal effect. It's not gonna be codified, it's not going to be placed in the county code. Maybe that's why it's, there's more of an ambiguous term that you're objecting to, because it's not gonna have any sort of uh, legal meaning, at least as far as I can tell.
My question is this. By, by making this, you call it a resolution?
Yes.
That's what it says.
Okay. That resolution then becomes a stepping stone to further encroachment on uh, what we now consider as our legal right to carry.
I don't know how that would be the case.
You don't think that uh, they can say, because of this resolution, then we can now put in a, 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 an ordinance or whatever to restrict uh, the concealed. in a, an ordinance or whatever to restrict the concealed carry in this building or this section of this building in the future?
I don't. Because this, Iron County's resolution does not in any way negate or limit the Second Amendment, Second Amendment itself?
Exactly.
Or important state rights, and so-
So what is, what is the, what is the advantage of having such a resolution when the ability to carry is already existent?
Can I speak to that for, because this affects me, and I'm not, I'm not looking to counter, but I'm looking to maybe shed some light on this.
Please explain it.
So as a, well, I don't know as I can explain, and I was certainly not, you know, had nothing to do with this creation or whatever, but I'm a concealed carry. I, I, I carry from time to time. I work in the courthouse. As a, as a building that is involved in tax rates and tax collection, not to mention just a government building, I, you know, I feel like there could be some, some targeting of this building as an employee that works here. I really want the ability to be able to carry. And of course, I have that right under Second Amendment, but there is some vagueness when it comes to, well, you can't carry in court, courtrooms. Well, this is the courthouse. I remember at one point, I, I mentioned the fact that I have, that I, that I carry, and somebody was like, ooh, I don't know if I'd say that very loud. And I'm like, is it, the thing that I like about this resolution, it's non-binding, it's just a resolution, but it does, it's a statement to our employees that it is policy of the county, that it is allowed, specifically is allowed within our policy, outside of the, the courtrooms, but we are in the courthouse. I, it, it is a little bit of an extra added, nothing more than, than really policy, but it definitely makes me feel that much more comfortable for me and my employees if they do want to carry, if we do have some nut job who has, you know, who decides to make this a target, that, you know, anyways, it probably doesn't matter at all, and I'm going to continue to carry one way or the other, but I'm just saying, I do appreciate this, and I'm supporting both of it.
Do, can I make a motion as chair? So I would move that we table this until Commissioner Blake's here to maybe explain his motives and, and what, and maybe in the meantime, we can, you know, look into this, but give him a chance in the next meeting. If we can put on the agenda next meeting, John, and, and just table this for now until, until Commissioner Blake is here to, to kind of explain what he's thinking, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we'll go on to personnel. Jennifer?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have ten items, actually eleven if you count the second section. So I'll just get going, and if you'd like to stop me, we can discuss it if you'd like. The first one is for the Iron County Sheriff's Office. The first one is for the approval of Caleb Anderson. He's completed all requirements to promote him from a corporal to a sergeant, and with this promotion, we'll adjust the corresponding pay to fall within county guidelines effective on three-eight of two thousand twenty. Next for the Sheriff's Office as well is Devin Lauritson. He's completed all requirements to promote him from a deputy one to a corporal, and with this promotion, the corresponding pay will fall within county guidelines as well. And the beginning date for that would be three-eight of two thousand twenty. Sheriff's Office is again, the, let's see, Deputy One Cory Perez, he was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant deputy one position for the Sheriff's Office, beginning three-eight, two thousand twenty. Then we go on to council aging. I've got Stephen Nish. He was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview, interview process to backfill for the vacant part-time outreach worker, and his beginning date will be today, three-nine, two thousand twenty. Next we have for the IT Department, April McDonald. She was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill for the vacant IT position, and hers will begin on three-nine of two thousand twenty. And we go on to the jail. Morgan Garrett was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant deputy one trainee position for the jail, beginning three-nine of two thousand twenty. Clayton Mitchell was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill for the deputy one trainee position, and his beginning date will be three-eight, two thousand twenty.
So are those two, is post required for those two?
Yes.
They've already done that?
They will be going.
Oh, it's a shorter one?
It's a shorter version.
Twelve weeks.
Oh, I see. And they've already done that?
No, they will, they're, they have to put their applications in, they'll go, they'll start in April, April twentieth.
Oh, okay. They'll start post April twentieth? Oh, good, okay.
And they'll be training before that. And then next we have for the Justice Court, Krista Oxenreiter. She was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant court clerk position within the Justice Court, and she will begin that position on three-sixteen, two thousand twenty. Next we have Jeremy Truman for the landfill. He's received a certification for HVAC tech and EPA six-oh-eight, and with that, we request for his promotion to follow county guidelines on pay. Beginning date three-eight, two thousand twenty as well. So those are just the hiring and promotion, and then if you want to go into policy, I can do that later.
Is there any discussion on these recommendations? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move the following person, for the following personnel approvals and corrections, promotion and any corresponding pay increase for Caleb Anderson for corporal to sergeant effective yesterday. Approval of promotion and any corresponding pay increase for Devin Lauritson from deputy one to corporal effective yesterday, three-eight, two thousand twenty. Approval of new hire Cory Perez as a deputy one effective three-eight, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position. In the Council on Aging Department, approval of new hire Stephen Nish as a part-time outreach worker effective three-nine, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position. IT Department, approval of new hire April McDonald as an IT technician effective three-nine, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position. Jail Department, approval of new hire Morgan Garrett as a deputy one trainee effective three-nine, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position. Also in jail, approval of new hire Clayton Mitchell as a deputy one trainee effective three-eight, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position also. Justice Court, approval of new hire Krista Oxenreiter as a Justice Court clerk effective three-sixteen, two thousand twenty, backfill of a vacant position. Landfill Department, approval of new certification, pay rate adjustment for Jerry, Jeremy Truman, effective three-eight, two thousand twenty. And that's my motion.
Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, next on the calendar is to change some of the wording, not change, I guess, add to some of the wording in the promotion policy, policy three. And in the third page towards the bottom, for your approval to add, and I'll just read it. If a promotion takes place within the last six months of the calendar year, an employee is not eligible for the yearly raise until the permission, probationary period status has ended. Upon the said, end of said probationary period, the employee may receive a yearly raid not rate not to exceed county average, only if acceptable performance level has been met said raise to take place in the pay period following the end of the probationary status. And the reason why I'm asking for that addition in there is I just kind of looked through twenty-nineteen's salary adjustments, and there were a couple on there that did not receive a raise because they had just been promoted. So with your approval to change and to add that, so those people can be eligible for that yearly raise, once their probationary period has ended.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan.
And that will affect just four individuals, and I can read those out if you'd like.
That'd be fine.
It will affect Nate Houchen, beginning this pay period, Sean Peterson, beginning four-six, Shalon Shaver, beginning four-six, and Stacy Mitchell, beginning five-three.
I don't know about Shalon.
And I didn't even know she was going to be there, so.
Just teasing you. Couldn't help but tease Sean. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the amended personnel policy, section three, salary placement, merit review, probationary review, transfers and promotions, as delineated by our HR director.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer.
That's all I have, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Oh, boy, I should have brought my stamp. Okay. Let's go to non-delegated items. Any prey dog matters? Or county boards? Yeah, and I had that voted, yeah. So you've got an on-the-road issue?
I have one on county board. In the landfill department, Eric Kowitski has actually left our employment. So in the Health Insurance Committee, it's Jeremy Truman is the landfill representative. Yeah, that's the only one I have.
Okay. Mike? So this is official, Mike. On the agenda, a couple of meetings ago, there was a discussion about, what we refer to as the Pickering Property. It's west by Quichpa along the highway. Does that sound familiar?
Mm-hmm.
Just in, to rehash a little bit for the detail, there was approximately forty acres that were divided into seventeen smaller parcels. They did not go through the subdivision process, just recorded deeds that purported to divide the property into smaller parcels. Two of those parcels were accesses for which individuals owning fifteen of the parcels could access those parcels from private roads through those smaller parcels, if that makes sense. They pretty much created a, a road. Those remained in private property ownership for quite some time until, and they were going to be placed on the tax sale this year. On November thirteenth of two thousand nineteen, there was a deed that purported to transfer ownership from a private entity to the county for those two access parcels only. It caused some concern, the county, those roads were not, they're not county roads, they were not accepted by the county in any way. Those acts, those parcels serve only to access those smaller parcels. They don't benefit the county in any other, or in, in any way. They don't go through to any other section of privately or publicly owned property. Only those parcels that were illegitimately subdivided. So there has been a question as to what to do in this situation, after talking it over with the clerk, the recorder, and the treasurer, I believe. I believe that there is an agreement to recommend to you that the county disclaim or eject any ownership in the property, record a deed, transfer that property back to whoever tried to give it to us. And along with that deed, record and exhibit or an explanation of what I just related to you, the history, so that if anyone was to look back and try and wonder why the county had divested itself of this property, that's an explanation why. The reason why I wanted to bring that up today is that, as I mentioned, it was going to be headed to the tax sale this year. There is some research that is conducted for all the properties headed to tax sale, title research to figure out who owns the property, make sure everyone's notified appropriately and so forth. That process needs to begin before you have the next meeting, and so we wanted to have that addressed with you today at this meeting to determine whether or not you support that action. If you do, we would have it placed on the next meeting's agenda to have you officially ratify that. Any comments or questions?
So we would vote on it today, or just vote to have it put on the future agenda?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get a feel for how you would like to, to proceed today. Would you like to, would you like to, to follow that recommendation and convey that back to those private property owners?
I definitely think that's the way to go.
Okay. And I think what we'd like to do is record the deed and then ratify that at the next meeting. Do you have concerns or questions about that?
Do we need a motion or anything, or just to that?
You don't, you don't have an item to act on.
We don't have it on the agenda.
Yeah.
So if, if we have your blessing to proceed that manner, that's what we'll do.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, have we missed anything? If not, we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.